Everybody ready? You guys ready?
I do excellent.
Alright, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming to the October twenty-second Oakland Town Commission meeting. If everybody could please hand for the pledge and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Constitution, to the Constitution, to the Constitution. And to the law, to the Constitution, for all. Thank you.
Father, in your name which comes to take this name, thank you so stand up today. Tell them that we're going. Thank you Father God, we never end it with the end is doing not sound my voice. Next you like to keep and look on us and just have a sad and know in the first Corinthians thirteen tell us about. Save hope and love. The greatest is love. Lord, and we continue to show the love. One turn of the disreprint Jesus' name.
Revenant. Thank you. Yes.
Hey, Mr. Matt Paulin. Sit up Paulin. Mayor Taylor.
Eric.
Vice Mayor. What was any?
Okay, great. Okay, so on the items tonight, we have a couple of proclamations to read. Alright, so we're gonna start out first with the proclamation for families better together. A week, we get the families better together. Whereas the town of Oakland is blessed with a multitude of families and a central part of the culture, social, and spiritual fabric of our community. And whereas the town of Oakland commissioners recognize that strong families are at the center of strong communities. That children live better lives when their families are strong. And that families are strong when they live in communities that connect them to economic opportunities, social networks, and services. And whereas everybody has a role to play in making families successful, including neighborhood organizations, businesses, nonprofit agencies, policymakers, and of course, families themselves. And whereas during the week of November second through the ninth, twenty twenty-four, town residents should take time to honor the importance of families and recommit to enhance and extending the special connections. With support and strengthen them throughout the year. And whereas the town of Oakland will join other Orange County municipalities, agencies, and organizations to honor and celebrate the family unit. The bedrock of our communities. Now therefore, I Shane Taylor by virtue of authority vested me as mayor of the town of Oakland, Florida, on behalf of the entire town commission do hereby proclaim. The week of November second through the ninth, twenty twenty-four, in the town of Oakland, week of the family, families better together. So there we go. Thank you. And Victoria?
Yes.
How are you?
I appreciate how I was telling them I already posted on social media complimenting you on the cleanup after.
Oh.
The hurricane after Milton, you did a great job and you have wonderful events for families all year long and we like posting them on our website. For reference, so people see the work we'll be doing that we purge families to visit. I like to have a picture.
Sure. Of all of us? Yeah, sure. Sure, we can do that. Sure. Don't be back here or you wanna? Where you wanna go? Yeah, I can shut them.
Alright, y'all.
There we go. Come on, I will get her right. Let's find the word.
Maybe.
There we go.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's a fun one, isn't it?
Oh, man.
Okay, we have, wait, everybody do that. And a month or so, hopefully we won't have that problem really walk around without trying to kill yourself there. We got one more proclamation read, and this is the Veterans Day. So whereas the town of Oakland honors the bravery and sacrifices of the men and women who have served the United States Armed Forces. And whereas Veteran Day provides an opportunity for all citizens to express gratitude. To those who have defended our freedom and way of life, and whereas the dedication and service our veterans reflect the highest values of duty. Courage and selflessness, contributing to the security and prosperity of our nation, and whereas the town of Oakland is proud to stand with our veterans. Acknowledging the debt of gratitude we owe to those who have served. Now therefore, I Shane Taylor, virtue of the authority vested me as mayor of the town of Oakland, on behalf of the entire town commission. Do hereby proclaim November eleventh, twenty twenty-four as Veterans Day. And the town of Oakland encourage all residents to join in recognizing the service of our veterans. So thank you. Any veterans in the audience tonight? Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Who? Oh, Brian.
Yeah. Never know who you're around.
You don't know. Congratulate. Good job. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Alright, Elise, what else is next? Consent agenda.
Public forum.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public forum. Joseph got me all screwed up there on that one there.
Did my job.
Public forum. Yes, you please. Yes, you may. Gotta say your name and address. Name and address.
Nobody knows. You would never know who you are.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Beck. I will be over at five eleven West Post Hill, Oakland, Florida. I've been here since nineteen eighty-four. And I just wanna say to the town of Oakland, I love the town of Oakland. I love the people in Oakland. I've had two to thank you. Everybody. And I just wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you. Especially the police department, the fire department, the commissioner, because I didn't have flights for a few nights today. And now can you call into the police department and if you need what you want, here there gonna be some hot tea, because I want a hot tea. I don't care. The little thing, big thing, for granted. Anything will do for me. I'd like to say thank you. There was ten people saying we got here. And only one went back, but I wanted to let you know I love. And I thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Alright, anybody else? Hey, come on up. John.
I'm Andrew Spine, three oh six East Bay. So first of all, I apologize for not staying up to date. Just where are we at with the roads? I know there's been some. Sense of things going on. I never heard of results of the survey that went out.
You can. Yeah, Jessica, you wanna? John, basically the survey was a fifty-fifty split is what it was essentially. As far as updates on the road on the Parker or Nathan, wanna kinda Nathan, you wanna?
Yeah, they're hoping because of the hurricane, they weren't able to rent all the equipment they needed. Everybody's using skid steers and whatever. But the week after next, they're hoping to start over on the experimental road on golly. That's what we're gonna be doing the reclaimed asphalt, hoping that ends up being something throughout the town.
Okay, good. My perspective, my opinion, project that we did around my neighborhood is not really worth pursuing. That's my opinion. Feel about that? It's, it's a mess to drive on, sweat, it's a lot of maintenance. And it's not working. I would suggest to possibly do a survey differently. That would be to take an area where there are maybe some plates like Oakland Shores. And survey that area and see what those residents feel about paving their roads versus a general consensus from the whole town. So I know it's an emotional topic and, and, but that would give us a better sense of. What those people that would be impacted with or without the asphalt would really want in their area. I know Oakland Shores is pretty much surrounded by asphalt, so it'd be a nice place to like that in my opinion. So just food thought. And I wanna echo Marilyn Max getting through this hurricane and the job the town did. I really appreciate. I really do. Me too. To see how they got rid of all these trees and stuff and all that that quickly is amazing. And I really appreciate my neighbors. My neighbors are fantastic. Know how to do stuff. They're willing to do it. And as a more senior neighbor, I really appreciate that. So thank, thank you, guys. Thank the town for. They did.
Absolutely, John.
So is that, I mean, is that the next project, that experimental road and?
Yeah, but then the hope is to try to figure out, you know, how much and implementation plan on.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that we, if we're gonna go forward in certain spots with that, that we actually come up with a plan, timeline, a budget. Lets us follow through instead of just talking about it.
Yeah, got it. Alright, alright, thanks, John. Appreciate it. Thanks for the kind words too. Anyone else? Okay, so here now we'll close the public forum and bring it back to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda tonight is minutes from the ten eight twenty-four town commission regular meeting. And then also in your packet was the town commission holiday meeting schedule for the November and December months. Any questions or comments from anybody? No, or none? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Sound on favor?
Aye.
Okay, other policy matters tonight will be selection of the solid waste provider. Andy?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Members of the town commission. I'm gonna just give you a brief background of the agenda item. I'm gonna use Ed Kula Kowski. Set on the solid waste committee advisory group committee to kinda give you an overview of. Grab the service change that you have before you and reasons why, and then talk about some things that were discussed during those committee meetings. But on July sixth and on the twenty-second, members of the solid waste advisory group met to review proposals for solid collection. The town received a total of four proposals. Of course, we'd like to thank John Smith, Carlos Esteban, Steve Stanford, and Ed Kula Kowski for their prime commitment during the process. Town currently builds residence seventeen ninety-seven per month under waste management contracts. That as we know is ending on January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The group reviewed the proposals and ranked them based on letters of interest, qualifications, scope, summary, total fees, and references. The group discussed the pros and cons of each company, gave their top selections, and I'll let, I yield to Ed here in a second. If you have any questions related to the various companies or the proposals themselves. But to keep the current level of service in the town, the bids range from twenty-eight ninety-five to forty-three eleven. This would include twice a week collection using the residence carts that we have now. I believe the current provider that we have, if we were to do nothing, their proposal was around forty dollars, so it had gone up from about the seventeen ninety-seven forty dollars. So the committee is coming this evening to make a recommendation to reduce the collection days to once a week, which is common in other municipalities. And provide a town branded rolling trash and recycle cart that will be owned by the town at the end of the contract. The proposal also splits the routes into two separate routes with different collection days. And this brought the monthly rate down to a total of twenty-five fifty-eight being charged by the selected or the recommended provider. So in accordance with town code, if the RFP is awarded to Waste Pro, the town commission will need to adopt a resolution establishing a new solid waste rate. Which typically includes a small and straight fee. So what we're here tonight to discuss is just the contract between the town and the service provider. And I'll yield without saying much more, we can open it up for discussion. I yield to Ed Kula Kowski, who was generous enough. Took quite a bit of time during these meetings to go through each of the proposals. And he's here tonight to provide a summary of the outcome of the third meetings.
Okay, thanks. So yeah, I'm Ed Kula Kowski. I was one of the members of the advisory committee, solid waste. Everybody got it. Get rid of it. And so we looked at the proposals that the town received. To evaluate what would be in the best interest of the town as far as service can cost. So the bottom line upfront, we recommend Waste Pro as the new solid waste contractor based on their proposal. And that will utilize their option four. I'll talk a little bit about later on. Which was, which is once a week pickup of household waste instead of twice. Yard waste and recyclables, all of it is once a week. Residents will be supplied by the contractor. One ninety-five gallon trap container for mainstream trash and one ninety-five gallon container for recycled elements. The residents will have an option of requesting a smaller sixty-four gallon can if they want, if they've got room in their garage, a problem with space or whatever. Both for the recycle and for the trash. If you want to add more cans, you can do that. There will be an additional charge for that. The bins will be owned by the town at the end of the contract, and that's kind of the bottom line. We did meet twice with Mike Parker, Nathan Brown to review the proposals. The town put together a pretty good RFP, I thought, to solicit proposals for replacement of the contract for solid waste pickup. The bid package asked for a description with services and corresponding prices. Number one, to exactly replace existing service, and number two, if they had any alternate services that they thought would be beneficial to the town. We did receive four responsive. The bidders were cultural waste, FCC environmental waste management, and Waste Pro. We looked at all the proposals. Cultural waste was dismissed as not being a serious bidder. They couldn't even address their response to us. Town of Oakland, they addressed it to the city of Taramac, different RFP number. We figured that a lack of attention in the proposal led to a lack of attention in delivery of service. Of the three remaining bidders were all deemed qualified to provide service in Oakland. All the bidders included some options for it. We evaluated everyone actually as being qualified, and so we shortlisted two bidders, Waste Pro, who was the lowest price offer. And Waste Management, who was our current provider. And we asked the follow-up questions to each of the contractors regarding sizing of the containers, how they might handle overflow trash that might not fit in the container, but might be placed alongside. Waste Management was actually really good about that. If anything out on the curb, they would, they would take it up. Pick up yard waste and also white goods. I learned white goods are things like old refrigerators and washing machines. So both shortlist contractors responded with follow-up questions. We got good responses from both of them, and so we think that the lowest price bidder, Waste Pro, is recommended and thanks. The service summary. So the new contract that we're recommending will be provided by two new compressed natural gas powered rear lowered trucks. And one pickup truck for supervisor use. The truck will through innovative service verification, GPS-enabled cameras to record and verify the waste collection activities and manage anomalies like missed pickups. Both of the shortlist bidders had some unique features. To monitor their own performance, and if residents have an issue, they can call up and we can verify what actually happened on the street at the time where there's a. They didn't get a pickup, but the stuff wasn't out on curb at the time of pickup. Easy to resolve issues like that. The mainstream solid waste service will address the town in two parts. Half the town will be serviced on Tuesday and the other half on Friday. So instead of having picked up Tuesday and Friday, now. Half the town will have it on Tuesday and the other half on Friday. We hope that the larger containers that will be supplied will be adequate to handle that. Recycling collection will be accomplished by one Thursday. Yard waste will be accomplished by one truck on Wednesday. Bulk waste, like old furniture and stuff, will be accomplished by one truck, half town on Tuesday, the other half on Friday, same as the mainstream trash collection. White goods like appliances will be accomplished by the supervisor truck on Tuesday and Friday. Waste Pro is gonna provide real mainstream waste bins with an printed town logo for all the residents. Residents will have a choice of larger or smaller bins to suit their particular needs. The bin selection, large or small, will be identified by the residents via the survey prior to the start of the year. I'm guessing in January, with your utility bills, you'll get a survey saying, what, do you need one bin, two bins, large bins, small bins, and so forth? And your service will depend upon your responses to do that survey. Again, we're gonna have wheel recycle bins with the town name and logo. They're also gonna provide service for annual hazardous waste pickups. Public facilities like town hall here and Oakland Charter School, so they're all included in this contract. Overall, we felt that Waste Pro offers the best value for money, and we recommend contracting with them. Thank you.
Red.
Thank you.
Hey, anything else right now?
No, just a, just some points of clarification that as I said before, this is just the, would be approval of the request for proposal to recommend. To the committee's recommendation of Waste Pro. But it's important to note that our current contract, nothing will change with our current contract until January thirty-first, or it'll be February first that this would take effect. So we still have some time that we're gonna put out and gather all this information as far as if residents have any questions, so we just wait till you. Ask the residents to wait, we can get that information out. And if you have any questions, we'll most certainly give us a call. So that being said.
Thank you. Thanks. Any questions on them? You guys? Nothing?
That was pretty thorough. Very nice. Good job.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Ed, and everyone else. Any questions from anybody in the audience? Any question? Yes, Keller?
That's how we're twenty-five eleven, so we're in court. I'm just curious about the need for new bins. I think it's a lovely idea to have our logo on them, but. I'm sure everyone in the town currently has trash cans, so I have two questions is if a require, or a couple actually follow up to that. So is it a requirement to have their bin for automation? Is it like the ones that they lift into the truck, so it has to be a specific one? And then my other concern is that I only have so much room, so a much larger bin and where, and you know, and then neighborhoods with HOAs, we can't leave our bins outside. So we have to make room in our garage. And then the bin that I have now is just gonna end up in the trash, I'm assuming, like a lot of other people, which is waste that concerns me that's not necessary. So I guess my, my overall question is, is there an absolute need for new bins?
I believe.
But I can, I can tell you of the discussion that the advisory committee had, and we talked about several things. Number one, use of their containers, their trucks that are lifted or container, so the guys don't have to do it. It's an efficiency move for them. They can go faster. I think it will result in better service. I know in my neighborhood, people do have small bins. There's always stuff on the side that doesn't fit in the bin. So our audience in these, we're hoping that the, the larger solid bins will be able to contain the trash. And they'll be able to be lifted efficiently by the trucks. As far as the old, the old current existing one. You know, they can still be used for yard waste, or they can be transitioned to some other use like that, or, or they've just become more solid waste.
Is it possible to have a recycling day for anybody who wants to dispose of their existing bins? I mean, again, I don't have room for one I have plus two new ones, and I'm sure like a lot of people, I will just wanna get rid of it, and I hate to just. Have them all end up in the landfill somewhere because.
I don't know.
The hardest thing to ever, if you ever try to throw away a trash.
Does anybody, Waste Pro have any comment on that or?
If they're on the ground, put their garbage down and just put any rocks out and take it to the.
Or maybe just have Dave pick them all up first.
I'll come to you.
Ed, I got a question. Ed?
Yes.
All proposed, is it either or after the survey, or can it be a mix of some with ninety-five and some with sixty-four?
Oh, yeah, no, it will be individual. So if, if you personally, if you wanted with ninety-five, you'd get that. If you wanted with sixty-four, you'd get that. It's not one size fits all.
I was just, for Chris, you know, if she wants to have a smaller one.
No, no problem. Both for the, for the mainstream trash and for the recycling.
If you go out right out here to the left, there's a sixty-five gallon container and a ninety-five gallon container. Wait, I'll look at the difference.
If you wanted to have two ninety-fives, you can have two ninety-fives.
And there will be, I think, an upcharge for additional bins. Okay, so their proposal that I raised is say one mainstream trash, one recycler. You can have more certainly, but there'll be an adder for that.
The one-time cost by an extra bin or?
No.
A monthly.
Because they're picking up another can. So it's an additional, additional service.
Okay.
Good.
Joe Hogs, three oh one, Alkirk Street. What are you gonna do about the animals that get into the garbage sitting there for a week? And they're going to get into the garbage. The raccoons, we've had bears. I mean, they're not lockable. And I'm not gonna put that stinky thing in my garage, so it's on the side of my house. And so now, so the garbage disappeared twice a week. It's just gonna. And it's gonna be a problem because we see that up in the mountains.
Yeah, good, good point. Thanks, thanks, Joe. Yeah, John.
I don't know, contract, if it's always an apartment. Can the truck put down on the street once, to both sides? Really have to come down the other side and hit the other?
Yeah, I don't know if that's a logistic thing or a transfer, you know, how you guys plan your routes.
It's safer for the driver and the helper to, like, it's not that they drive to the end of the street, turn around and come down the street. Way it gets routed through route, they can tool. It'll route everything right-handedly, so they may come down on the side of the street at ten o'clock. But it might take them till eleven o'clock to come down the other side because everything's just right-handed.
Logistic consideration for the dust on the road is itself, the foul traffic on the surface.
Yeah, understood. Got it. Anyone else? Okay, so the, the two big takeaways I see are changes, I mean, large trash cans, and everybody gets a trash can. I guess the days, now there's gonna be, instead of Tuesdays and Fridays, now it's just Tuesdays for half the town or Friday for the other half of town. And then recycling changes, right?
Not necessarily.
Once a week, but instead of like Wednesdays, now it's on Thursday. You won't no longer have a bin, right? You'll have the can.
Can.
And then the white goods, and I thought that was a good one. White goods is good. A lot of people, the scrapper doesn't get them. Pick up, yeah. Uh, what do you need from us, Andy?
Just need approval from the town commission to authorize and self-execute the necessary documentations in order to track services with Waste Pro for the one daily. Garbage, like I know what you just presented to the commission, and then we'll bring that back and full town commission for approval.
Alright, somebody wanna make a motion?
How long is the contract for? I might have misread it or overread it.
We're gonna have to work out all those details. That's, it gets a little bit more specific when we get into the contract itself. It'll talk about the cost of living, CPI adjustments, and all those things, and we can work out a time as well during that time.
Typically, they're seven years.
Seven, seven years.
To select the solid waste provider, Waste Pro, recommendation from the committee?
Hey, second anybody?
Second.
Goodbye, Joseph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you, everyone who served. Thanks, Ed. Alright, Andy, next. Public parking and traffic study for the charter school.
At the, let's see, September town commission meeting, I presented a overview of possible parking improvements. That may help alleviate traffic for when you pick up at a higher charter school, as well as provide some additional public parking. In addition to provide some additional parking on Sundays, which is starting to see a large influx of parking as, as it relates to our. parking as, as it relates to our local churches. Uh, so on October second, uh, the town department heads met with local churches to discuss and gather input about the proposed study as well as traffic issues uh within this area. Uh, the consensus gathered at this meeting was that most of the traffic concerns were being experienced on Sundays as well on weekdays during school pickup and drop-off times at Oakland area charter school. So town staff is proposing uh utilizing Myra Planning and Design, who is a consultant, who has done some other uh smaller type projects for the town to provide recommendations and schematic designs to explore improvements by utilizing a portion of underutilized land um at the Oakland area charter school. The end goal of creating a conceptual plan will provide the town and Oakland area charter school a schematic design and roadmap to begin working towards routes that benefit the surrounding residents, the school, local churches, businesses and the town. School safety will also remain a priority in addition to maintaining a relatively low impact to Oakland area charter school. Uh, the proposed agreement that you have before you would be funded in the current budget under road resurfacing line item. And proposed funding for the project is to be determined upon completion of the evaluation and schematic design. Um, I did show it overhead at the last meeting, it's uh we're looking to possibly might, like I said before, some additional parking and possibly reduce the drop-off and pick-up time to Oakland area charter school in the morning and afternoons. Um, attached, you have a scope of services agreement with Myra Planning, the consultant. Um, she would basically go through these different task forces um in the scope of services to include permitting, draft schematic design, final schematic design. Um, and then as well as host meetings necessary with all the department heads to make sure that everybody's providing their input, as well as the town commission. Um, any residents to have some input, she'll be more than willing to listen as well. So with that being said, uh, town staff recommends approval, uh, scope of services with Myra Planning and Design in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, and then the goal would be to bring back the schematic design of the area there that we're looking to make these parking um and transportation improvements, and then be able to come back and give the, provide the council more concrete costs of what this would cost uh to make those improvements. So with that also.
Questions for anybody? Um, so I know that looking at Myra's proposal, it looks like um she's gonna provide obviously the permits to remove the great drain field that's there. Uh, we'll have to hire a contractor to remove the drain field.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, she'll draw up some schematic plans and final plans and meetings. Um, it also says on here that uh as far as subconsulting goes, survey for the uh property, um. I don't know if we already have one or if it's actually even necessary to do one, get a simple plot plan.
I, I think she was um uh proposing a total survey, obviously we can get the lay of the land. We do have a boundary survey. So it was a top geographical survey.
Yeah, we're gonna leave it grass, right? We're not doing, we're not changing any elevation.
Well, we do have some drainage concerns back there, so she just wants to make sure that that's taken care of.
Okay, so soon after they move the drain field, they might change the topo again, so either bring more dirt or not, so we don't have water stuck, so that's what I'm thinking the topo is for, right?
Yeah. So do we wait until the drain field's removed and then get any surveys? You have a, yeah, somewhat of that area. We gotta get the cost on that, obviously. Um, and then is a geotech report necessary? If you're not, if the only thing you're doing is taking, removing the drain field and backfilling it and compacting it. Start it, seed it, however you wanna do it. I don't know, so geotech, I don't know if a twenty-five hundred or dollar, five thousand dollar geotech report's worth it. For grass lot. Great. I'm, I, you look, here, here's how I'm looking at this, guys, is that how they're doing it at Lakeside Parks on the ball field. That's essentially how I see this being, except for there's a few more gates and some fencing that has to go in there. It, it, it seems very, very simple to me to do. Um, so I, I'm just very curious if all these uh are are needed. Um.
I agree with you on that part, just the once you get the height of it, once you remove that, until you have one, whether you have to, I, we wanna have water stuck there on.
I think, I think the mayor has a good point there with the geotech. I think that we could easily delete that.
Right.
Um, the survey, we really need it for the, the drainage. We have to keep, that's the drainage for Star Street and everything runs through there, so.
Yeah, we are, we are.
Looking to relocate some of that fence there behind the property owners, and so just on the west side there, so probably would be good to know what, what, what the land is of the school versus what's on.
And then the, yeah, ob- obviously, I, I think a lot of this will be used by, uh, you know, Lakeside, probably with their congregations uh uh on Sundays, as well as Anointed Church uses, I think, mostly the parking lot uh at the Charter School. I know driven by there on Sundays and seeing cars parked there.
Yeah.
Uh, which is makes sense because they can walk right across the, the street. Um, and I think will be making residents happy uh for not parking in front of the, on the ball field. Um, I, I, that, the right of way that runs is that, will that just be gravel, paved it, that, oh, well?
Um, I mean, we, we had talked about it being either way, I mean.
Gravel, it's, yeah, dirt, yeah. Yeah, cuz.
Well, asphalt millions is.
Asphalt millions, yeah. We'd be the John Turd stuff over there, and his road channel. You know? It, it, so, so, so my thought, gentlemen, is, is that it's just a, it's, it's just a grass lot, that's it. I don't think, and I, and I believe the, the thought was from Principal Dwyer was that it could be utilized by the school if, if uh, you know, it's not being used on a, you know, Monday through Friday parking and stuff like that, so. Yeah, okay. Anybody else?
Uh, we mentioned also that it could be used for the fourth and fifth graders drop off Monday through Friday.
Yeah, we're trying to look at all the, we're looking at those, all those options.
Maximize not just Saturday and Sunday.
Right. We would have the school at that, I see if that's an option. And so that's why we kind of were hiring this, to look at solving more than engineer.
Eviate some of the traffic on Open Avenue by putting fourth and fifth graders drop off, just checking in in into that for now.
And the school hardening thing, so all I have to look at, depending on where that could take place, but that was brought up, that we could possibly make that, and that would hold a lot more cars in that area and get them off, off the roadways now, and, and you know, if you drop them on time, the students are in a different spot, it's a half the drop off time.
And they have to pick up.
Mm-hmm. But that would, I, that would be something that I'd really like to give it to school, you know, the school on, and let them look at that as well, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, I, I, I'm, to me, I'm good with the study and stuff, I just, those stuff, I don't think we really need to waste our effort and money on doing that, but other than that, yeah.
I think we could possibly get to the schematic design, and before we
do any type of survey or permitting.
Yeah.
And then, and then.
Spending any money, basically, so.
Correct. Okay, all right. Good for me. Uh, you need a what? See, with Myra?
Just, yeah, just prove a scope of services agreement that's attached.
Okay, anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to um the Department of Parking and Traffic Studies, Myra, who was in those.
Okay, second? Questions, second, all in favor? Aye, okay. All right, moving on to town manager and department reports.
Um, I don't necessarily have any reports, uh, just a lot of thank yous um from uh from myself to the town staff during Hurricane Milton. Uh, Lisa, our assistant town manager took the helm during that time, did a fantastic job. Um, I hope I, I hear from the mayor as well, so I just really appreciate the town department heads and staff for that while I was out. Um, in addition, uh, what we just approved this evening, um, in previous years, I think town hired consultants to do, to draft these RFPs because they are quite expensive, but they're all cookie cutter type RFPs, and so we did that all in-house. Um, did it out competitively, went with the lowest bids. So Nathan Brown, uh, took that as, as his personal project, uh, that's coming on as the Assistant Public Works Director and, and led the charge there with the committee, so Nathan, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, appreciate all your hard work there, so I could go on with thank yous to everybody, but um, I'll leave it at that and, and let each of the department heads on these, Jessica Lovejoy is gonna kind of give us a recap on Hurricane Milton. Um, if you wanna go ahead and do that now, and then there's a.
Yeah.
Hey, hello, Jessica Lovejoy, the community and average director. And um, I shared this at our directors' meeting, post-storm. Uh, good thing we already commissioned here too, so this is just uh some numbers related to the town's communication, emergency communication during storm. So we communicated to residents uh through different forms, one was our website. We had a banner at the top, so you can see post-storm info that was included on all pages of the website, and then we also have a news flash that was at the bottom. Um, our website traffic chart is tied, you can see the left is September second through the twenty-ninth. The right-hand side is the week of the hurricane. We had about a thousand more people visit the website during that time. Um, on an average day, the Charter School is the most popular click on our website. Um, but during the hurricane, it was Hurricane Milton, specifically sandbags. Um, just a quick plug, uh, uh, the ladies at the front desk, thanks to Public Works, gave over, gave out over almost three thousand sandbags during that timeframe. It was busy in Town Hall. Uh, next week. Uh, and then we also had email communication. Um, we've heard from, you know, folks, the commission, and we've heard from people in this room to increase our communication efforts, and one way that we've done that is through emails. Um, and so we sent out uh four emails um during the storm. Two emails uh pre-storm on sandbags, road closures or town closures, and like uh important, important information for residents. And then one encouraging email from the mayor. And then one post-storm email that was on debris pickup. Our average open rate for Hurricane Milton emails was sixty-eight percent, which is about double our current uh normal uh open rate. We sent that to one thousand nine hundred and fifty residents. Um, and those are mostly households because it's attached to their water account or their utility account. Um, sometimes there's two emails on that account, but for the most part, it's one resident per account. And then Facebook was another place that we um uh communicated with residents. We did a total of twenty-three posts with three of those being mayors, or, excuse me, three of those being videos of the mayor. Um, and during that time, seventeen thousand, about seventeen thousand six hundred people saw our posts. Now, obviously, we don't have that many people in Oakland, so um Facebook actually tells us where those people live. The majority were in Oakland, then it was Winter Garden, Claremont and Okowi. We're seeing the information that we put out. Um, the next in interesting number is the interaction. So those are people that actually clicked like, love, or shared it. So we know that they actually saw, they read it for the most part, um, and interacted with us. On an average week, our interaction is a hundred and fifty people. So during the storm, we interacted with sixteen hundred people, mostly in Oakland. Um, and then um you can see, there's other information there too, but um like an average week, we uh reach we, this, during Milton, we reached seventeen thousand people. We usually reach about two hundred people, usually, so it was a huge increase. If you wanna click to the next page? Oh, sorry. It's getting excited. Can I click back if?
I think so.
Sure can. There you go. And so this, um, Facebook also shows us what our top performing posts were. So the top performing post uh was our road closure post. That was the first post, post-storm. So when everybody was waking up, you know, looking to see uh what was um, what, what had happened. And that was uh ten thousand people, nearly about ten thousand or less, saw that post. And eighty-seven people reacted, commented, liked. Um, and then we also had thirty-seven shares on that post. It was being shared by news outlets. Um, you know, residents, community members, and then we had twenty-four comments. Um, there was a great picture that Chief was able to, to snap for us when he was dragging around, turning to town early that morning, that you may have seen of a branch in front of historic Town Hall that narrowly missed it, you know, by just a few feet. And then, of course, um, uh, solid waste is always a popular post. That was the next um, uh, most viewed post. I can go to that speech. And then for this page, I put on there specifically for the department heads, especially in our post uh Milton storm debrief, um, it, it's just a snapshot of the residents that said thank you. There's a platform where the office said thank you. Um, thank you for the debris pickup, you know, thank you for communicating. Um, so much of what like my team does relies on the other department heads to share information with us, and it was a wonderful exchange of information where we were all meeting frequently and um having that information um dialogue so that we could communicate to residents, and hopefully uh, you know, they, they found the information that they needed useful and helpful um to receive updates, so. Um, thank you again, thank you to my colleagues that, that helped us communicate and um it uh hopefully was well received.
Thank you, Jessica. Anything else while you're there?
It feels like a long time since Music Under the Oaks. Uh, we've been through a lot, but you know, thank you for those of you that came to that great event, and uh we have lots of exciting things coming up, so grab an events flyer, trees this season, and Christmas is nearly back starting next month, so uh thank you to those of us that are doing Christmas trees.
Thank you.
You, Jessica.
Thank you. Mike, what do you guys got to cover works?
Uh, I think the, the big thing is the debris cleanup. Uh, we're, we're asking residents now to uh to stop putting out the big piles on Friday. Friday will be the last day for those to be picked up. Theoretically, we'll see how that works. Um, but we'll be picking up debris for probably another month.
And that's uh for the grapple to come back through.
Yeah.
Do a more swing through everything.
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
But e- even though we're asking residents to pause on Friday, we'll have a grapple truck here next week, so you can bet on it.
Okay.
Um, just a quick question, Mike. I know my neighbor had a lot of fence come down. Some time, you know, uh, there's. Where you need some.
Yeah, so um all the green debris, the trees and the limbs and stuff like that, that has to be kept separate from that. We are picking that stuff up too. It just may be there for a little while, but we're, we're getting all of that stuff. All the debris will be removed. It goes to a different location, it's what it is, so.
That it?
That's it.
Mike did a video too, I heard.
He did, yeah.
Yeah, that one did, yeah.
I think he had that one ready. It can be funny to run it out.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, that was.
Other guy.
Chief?
I can't remember, five oh, we scheduled for November seventeenth.
Your post. November seventeenth.
November, it's not a running time, so. But uh, November seventeenth, we'll be doing.
Question about that, it's the same weekend as uh Ford Classic? Will y'all be pulled down there?
I think it is. Uh, I think it is that same weekend. We're doing it real early.
Okay.
Like, what time is it?
Eight AM, maybe. It's on a Saturday, right? Sixty, correct?
Maybe wrong, maybe we got.
Well, give it a ride. It's usually just the week after is Thanksgiving weekend, I believe.
It is.
So we got that. I'm, I'm wrong, I'm wrong. You, you, you're a week early, yeah, so I make sure that we not miss the training.
Ready to run it?
Yes, sir.
You can run it all on.
Okay, I'll be there.
Wait, that's recorded. I was kidding.
Yeah.
It is, so.
Next weekend.
I did, I did, I did, you need this.
Yeah, thank you. Lisa, anything from you?
Um, I just wanna acknowledge, like, the team that did a great job while, you know, during the hurricane, I mean, I, I was over mayor was over at the police department with the emergency operations center, and um, they did a fantastic job. Parker spent the night there, police uh chief Eason and all his crew were there, so, you know, they were, they had their eyes on Oakland and put that as priority among their, their own family, so I just wanna acknowledge that, you know, it takes a special type of person to do that, and then Jessica just did an amazing job with all the posting that you saw, like, that all came right after Music Under the Oaks. It was like bam bam, and you know, she was on it, so I just really, really appreciate, you know, the staff that we have and the work that they do, so.
And I'll.
Anything say for? I think it'll be. Related to the storm, we have any statistics about uh new power forms and power outage that's been on?
I, I know that, I know from uh power go obviously, a lot of people lost power, but I know that the power got put on to like winter's landing and in some sections that were out Friday.
Yeah.
Uh, and here, uh, you know, in our, we got a Saturn back. I think the whole town back on Saturday.
Yeah.
The water, the water plant was off for like sixty-nine hours, something like that, so we didn't have power over there. But um, that's what we have before, yeah. Good thing we didn't run out of gas.
So uh, yeah, so I know that when that, our power got put on, Mike and I were standing out. Yeah, guys. Sticking the uh fuses in. They actually had it done, they took a break, and then they Sticking the, uh, fuses in. They actually had it done, they took a break and then they. Oh, made this way. Yeah, they just waited a little bit because they were staring, staring at us, but, uh, you know, um, yeah, so. I, I thought Duke came quickly, uh, you know, more than I, quicker than I thought it would.
Well, we're having facts.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I agree.
And again, they had sixteen thousand people staged, uh, there at the, uh, at the different various locations and stuff, so, yeah. Very good, very good.
But I agree with that ask because it was something weird, because if you look at fifty. Fifty lights were on, but right there by the turnpike were off, so there was some kind of weird grid. Our community.
They were on because somebody from the police department powered up the generators for those traffic signals.
Oh, okay.
Uh, until I found out that all my gas was coming out of my budget. The issue, the true issue was, the DOT inspector, I passed him six of them all night. He was going around inspecting a ticket of a report. He didn't realize that we powered up those two sets of lights. He thought they were working. Oh, he skipped over them. I told the office. Thought too that, they have to know that those lights are down, and so those, those two hundred settings were actually being powered up by generator or not.
Actually, okay.
It was actually a whole.
Did you guys lose power here on your site town?
Portion like, my, my portion, I lost it until Saturday, and that's never happened in my twenty-plus years being here.
You, you lost it until Saturday?
But it was, uh, majority of the community had power. But with just a small sliver, so I'm not sure.
Kind of weird.
Where that, yeah, it was weird, where the cutoff was.
Yeah.
The majority of the community had power, but right where I was, along towards the turnpike, we didn't have power until Saturday afternoon.
Right. Um, one of the things I did do, um, Mike, it is, uh, I did talk to Duke, um. Yeah, about trying to, because there are water, part water plant, uh, right here and it being a critical, I think, asset. Um, trying to get a, uh, direct line number to dispatch so that they can hurry up and get something. Out here to us as they own.
Yes, so, it, that's great, uh, but the number that I used is a direct line right to their North Carolina office, a person that. Always answers the phone, so that's good.
So, um, they're, they're aware of it now. They said they're gonna try to do better next time.
A little tidbit that I found out during the storm, which I didn't know after twelve years, you would think I would know, but. The, um, the Claremont to Duke Energy Branch serves up to Tub Street and Winter Garden. Duke Energy serves up to Tub Street, so. Fighting line is.
Oh, Lake County? They think it'd be the county lines.
That's what I would, that's what I always thought, but, yeah. And even, even though, even though there was just a little bit of work that needed to be done on this side, the Claremont guys couldn't do it.
Oh, man. I would think it would be county lines too.
But we got linemen coming from out of state that can work.
Anywhere. Awesome, what's a good job though? Sal, you anything?
I'm same thing, extraordinary, extraordinary job, staff, team, police, everyone. It, it was just communication, mayor, thank you commissioners, everybody, it was great. Just to echo, just throwing back, thank you, thank you, thank you. And, um, you know, it could have been worse for all of us. It went well. Um, I got to witness, you know, the showing of the, of neighborly love in our town, neighbors helping neighbors. Which I was really honored in, in, you know, how, to see it all play out. You know, after seeing everybody kumbaya at the Music Under the Oaks, hanging out, and I, you know, I was looking around saying, would this. Reoccur after the hurricane, will everybody be at edge, but everybody carried on that same, you know. That music, the spirit of the town, and helped everybody outside play out was really great, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Rick?
Uh, first of all, Friday is pumpkin glow at the preserve from five thirty to nine thirty.
Just one day?
Yeah, just one day. The school has an event, they need parking space, so we can't do it both days. Um, the update on the storm, we probably lost about seven dozen trees at the preserve. Uh, we had some damage to the, uh, fish cabin. We had a lot of damage to the boardwalk. We had eight areas of the boardwalk that's damaged, some of it's pretty severe. Some of the trees right along the boardwalk blew over, then the roots kind of pushed a whole boardwalk up in several places. So it's a pretty extensive damage, so the boardwalk's going to be closed down for a while. We're getting an estimate for repairs now. Um, you know, we just, right at the beginning, we're fiscal year and. We're putting dent in our budget already for tree removal and all the other stuff. We are going to be looking to do a fundraiser real soon. Um, kind of looking at Giving Tuesday, and we're thinking of advertising that pretty heavily, but by the next meeting, I'll. Have some more information what we're looking at, and if you could spread the word to help us out, because we, we're going to need some money.
Commissioner, if, uh, if you could get with me after the, the meeting, um, I think all that is FEMA. No possibility, we.
Yeah, we, uh, Nicole's already filed the FEMA paperwork, but we can't count it. We don't know if we're going to get. Yeah, that or not, but we have filed that application.
Okay.
And then if your department can help us remove that debris before Friday.
Plan to do that tomorrow. Maybe.
I just want to say a quick, two things, one quick thank you, uh, you know, and the hurricane came. We have a big tree down, I reached out to Mike and these chief and, uh, Paul, the chief and Mike. Communicated right away, they're working through the town, they're coming over, there's, there was a big tree that fell off. Someone's car just stayed down, so, uh, even though we're on the side. It was like, yes, we're on everyone, I would say, so just say thank you. The other piece is, I didn't, I didn't report this last time, but I wanted to wait until, uh, Andy was here. Of course, a lot of, you know, are very involved with Florida League of Cities, and so during this time, Florida League of Cities. Is creating a policy messaging to the, to the state. I serve on one of the committees, it's called the Development Code Compliance and Redevelopment Committee. And in that committee, we have, um, we, we, we're all, all the different committees are coming up with different policies, um, positions. Couple of, but I'm just going to read out the, uh, potential, uh, policies that. Florida League of Cities is going to be lobbying the, uh, legislator on our behalf, along, let's come alongside them. Of course, for housing is a big one, vacation rental, you'd be surprised how vacation rental has exploded. Around the country without, with these non-licensed, um, providers. Uh, unlawful demolition of historical housing structures and farmhouse, farmhar, farmworker housing. There are a lot of housing around, of course, around the southwest, around the country. Where farmworkers are living in them in high numbers, of course, they essential persons, but some. Areas are really concerned about that, but the one that is going to help us, uh, impact fees utilization. Uh, Andy, uh, gave me some talking points as relates to trying to see if we can use the impact fees for other services. I.e. hire a grant writer. This is very important, because as, as you know, we got a, we were, um, vetoed in the budget this year. But for reasons to Santa, we vetoed a lot of those, those, um, infrastructure projects because they are grant dollars. So he's asking a lot of cities and towns and villages to go after grants. But we're a small town, you know, if we can hire someone to, uh, or grant writer to use some of their services to go after these grants. It'll make it a whole lot easier for most of these small cities and towns throughout. So Andy gave me some talking points. It's a potential, uh, policy position, and I just want us to, uh, realize that. You know, having Andy on board and having the staff on board to help us be maybe one of the main points that is going to be lobbied. For the legislator that help us, because if we can use our impact fees for other services. It can make a heck of a lot of difference, especially when it comes to some of the, the, uh, infrastructure, some of the things that we're trying to do in this town. So I just want to really thank Andy for, you know, being a part of the process. We may not make the number one priority for our committee, but we are in the conversation, because when I was, what, I was one of the ones who presented. Based off some of the notes that Andy gave me, and this is an issue statewide. A lot of cities and towns want to use their impact fees for other services. And when I, you know, made a presentation, there were several cities and towns around, um, room. That were chiming in and saying that this is a, a, a challenge for them, and they can use those dollars. It could be for grant writing, it could be other things, as long as it's going towards the infrastructure, whatever the impact is being done. On the growth of the town, it can really help those cities and towns, because a lot of, most of the cities and towns in the state of Florida are small. So we're in the conversation, we definitely want to continue, we have two more policy committees, one in November, one in December. We may not become a party, a main one, but we are part of the conversation, so. Uh, if, if, any way we can, you know, have our voice heard along with other cities and towns that can help us. Fiscally and at the same time grow, um, I think it's a good thing, and I want to say thank you to Andy for allowing me, giving me those talking points to. Be able to present, but it is, it, it, it got a lot of chatter. And as we all know, if we are being told to go after grants, we might have needs of help in order to, uh, sort of take some of the things that we're trying to.
Yeah, I agree, it's great. I, I think that's, uh, that, that, there should be something in there that says you can use your, I mean, we have. Two million dollars of transportation impact fees right now, so if a grant writer sits there and goes, it's going to cost you thirty thousand bucks for me to write this grant that you could possibly get. You know, two million more, it's worth it, and, uh, you know, and. And impact fees can only be used on certain items, you know, you can't use it to repave a road, excuse it to improve something, but. Repaving a road has to go, is taxes collected and it's kind of be into a budget. But, uh, no, I, I think there's, it's like a no-brainer to do that, so, yeah.
I know it's going to be one, so every committee only can have one policy. But you can have a subcommittee, a sub-policy, and this will be a part of the conversation. Uh, statewide, because there were several cities that even hiring someone to ma- manage the grant, you know, it was. Was a discussion, okay, you got somebody who write the grant, we still need a human that's going to be able to do the reporting, do the follow-up and all that. That, that's, that's what Mike does at all.
Yeah, that's right, because not only is, you're right, so when you write a grant, you might write the grant, but then there's this whole reporting you have to do that, Mike, if you had the grant for. Two years, you had to report every quarter for the two years that we spent X, we spent X, we did this type thing, yeah, that's, that's awesome.
Yeah, maybe it's a long time, but we definitely in the conversation, and that was one of the priorities that the state really wants to. Bring about, and I would just able to add into the conversation again, and I'll keep saying it, but I just want to thank Andy for my talking.
Yeah, great, thank you.
So the impact fees can be used for, uh, not for new roads, but to improve the roads?
No, no, only, it's only related as a result of growth.
Yep.
Yeah, the capacity or.
Yep.
There's a lot of gray area, but this would require, as Joseph is pushing through, is trying to, it would require a change. State statute, the law change basically to, to allow that, so.
But, yeah, to improve our dirt roads. Not new asphalt, improve the dirt roads.
Well, yeah.
Your exposure would to, to litigation might be high in that case, and, and I'm not sure how that would shake out.
Okay, um, I, I'd just like to echo what everybody said about thanks to the staff. Um, Andy, you, the, your, your staff is extraordinary, um, we should be very, very proud of, of how they handled the situation. Um, I think the storm could have been a heck of a lot worse than, than what it was, but when you're. Air, and this is my first experience in there, uh, with them and sitting in the, the C meetings and, and all that stuff. And just hearing them and seeing them in action, it's, I mean, every resident should be very proud, so thank you. Chief, Mike, Nathan, Jessica, Elise, and everybody else for, uh, for being there and, and caring. About the residents of the town, so, um, you know, my hat's off to you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and getting us back up and running as well, so.
We think the same thing about you.
Well, okay, well, thank you, Mike. With that being said, Joseph.
Our hearts and minds are satisfied.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.